It's March 8, 2018. Let the record reflect that we have Directors Kramer, Brown, Norris, and Sexton in attendance. Director French is unfortunately home ill. First order of business would be to the consent agenda. Could I hear a motion to accept, adopt the consent agenda, please?
Make a motion that we accept the agenda?
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is accepted. Do we have any comments? People signed up for comments from citizens present on agenda or non-agenda items? Mark Christie, come forward.
Anyway, I just wanted to update you, Mark Christie, 3184 Northeast Loop Drive. As my role as a board member and president of the Neighborhood Association, I met with Ed Drysdad and Cassie Rudd today. First meeting. Miles has worked tirelessly on getting the opportunity for us to meet. So, we had a couple rescheduling issues, but got that done today. And first thing I gotta tell you, Ed just seems like a great guy, doing great things for the community and the city around here. And Cassie just joined him, so she's pretty excited about her new opportunity and new role. Matter of fact, she was so quick that she sent out an update to our meeting before I even got in the car, so she's doing great. But what I was really pleased to see, because one of the topics I was gonna talk to Ed about is, and I know most everybody knows, the city came out with kind of a promotional piece not too long ago, video, and you didn't see much on the lake. And obviously, we all know the lake is a very vibrant spot and really a great asset, not only the city, but the community and the county. And so, before I even got an opportunity to say that, Ed was telling me they're continuing to update the videos, and they'll be, I think they've got a paddleboarder now on the lake, and maybe some kayaking, and some of that stuff will start getting into that video, so that'll be fantastic. And then their pitch piece here, their visitor's guide, has got a really nice spot picture and talks about Devil's Lake and Regatta Park here. So, anyway, we've got some things that I think mutually we can work on, is not only the Neighborhood Association, but the Water Improvement District to really highlight and continue to work on those positive things on the lake. So, just wanted to give you that brief update.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks for being an advocate for Devil's Lake. Appreciate it, the Neighborhood Association. Do I have any other audience members that would like to address the board before we get started? Okay, great. Unfinished business, then. We'll have briefings from the different committees. The first onboard is the sewer committee. I know on the agenda that we had expected Tina to give us a little update on her white paper, but since she is absent and home ill, Josh is gonna do that, so thanks, Josh.
Sure thing. As Kent mentioned, I spoke with Tina earlier, and she drafted up a white paper with a few bullet points as to what the next steps the sewer committee has identified to take, and wanted to get those in front of the board. They are interested in having a pro forma done on the cost and feasibility of a sewer system around the east side of Devil's Lake. Within that, they would like to see a financial model of costs and necessary revenue for the system to share with the homeowners on Devil's Lake. There are a couple of organizations, she has listed out to contact, one of those being Converge Communications and Cardno, which is a large engineering firm in Portland. There is a third one that district staff has identified, Civil West Engineering Firm. They introduced themselves to me a couple months ago, and I've had a couple meetings with them since, and they do infrastructure planning, which may be useful in this scenario as well. So, we're, the sewer committee is not asking for an approval of any funds for this tonight, just more to move forward with this very, very general plan as to the next step to take in regards to the east side of Devil's Lake Sewering.
So, Josh is, are, they've identified the people that are the different organizations and such that would have an interest in this and supporting the idea that we go forward to find out what those different costs would be? And are they in the process of putting together a bid for that? I know that we asked you if, or if you could talk with George Dunkel of the special districts regarding if they've found a credible person to put that together for us, if we could do a self-appointed, or we'd have to do an RFP, or do you know that?
I did. I reviewed the Oregon statutes which pertain to this, also spoke with George for confirmation, and we can do a direct appointment on this, and I believe the limit is $100,000 if I'm correct. Up to plan, I, you know, that's certainly not the number the sewer committees came out with, and they're, they're kind of just came this, came with this preliminary number of $20,000, which is rudimentary at this point, we're not really sure. But that's what we wanna talk to the board, or what the sewer committee wants to bring before the board tonight. Is it okay, does this sound all right, to move forward with this as the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District to investigate who we would want to maybe perform this work and what we would want included in such a plan if we were to continue?
And so, you're asking us if we should move forward, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have opinions from the board, discussion? I know, Josh, we have approximately in the budget about, isn't it $30,000 set aside for sewer and stuff as a line item that we could put forward if we needed to?
That's, that's correct.
But we're looking at something substantially less than that.
Yes, in the sewer committee meetings that I sat in on, and conversations I've had with Tina, we're looking at somewhere between, you know, around, and it really depends on this number, like I said, that's a very preliminary number, that 20,000 of the district may be committing somewhere around $5,000 or so to this plan. In addition, some of the other interested party may, parties to approach would be the city of Lincoln City, the Devil's Lake Neighbor Association, the BB Camp, the Slets Tribe, and the Governor's Task Force Regional Solutions with the state of Oregon has expressed interest. I've had conversations with their representative, Jackie Mcolonis, and she's came down and sat in sewer committee meeting or two as well. So, like I said, it sounds like they have an interest too, but given our process, the sewer committee wants to get this in front of the board at every step and make sure that we're, we're all on the same page, so.
Well, I know I've sat in on some of the sewer committee meetings, and it seems like that if, if we're at least looking at the options available for the possibility, this is, this is a good, good start. And it's nice to see, in my mind, that, hey, Devil's Lake, I mean, I think as a board, we are, we believe in the health of the lake and that the long-term limiting of nutrients into the lake would be ideal if we could have sewer instead of septic around the lake. And so, at least exploring this idea, I think, is a positive step in the right direction.
I would say, exploring the idea. I think we're getting closer to, I know, a couple meetings back, some concerns that I had, that it was just way out there and wasn't pointed enough, and they're getting there, that would be my opinion on it, but they're really not asking us anything pointed other than, what I read here is, are they going in the right direction? And I say yes. But I would say before I would allocate any funds, it needs to be in a planned format, what the dollars are, a cost, what they're gonna be using it for, and who's gonna do it. And at that point, I could make a decision.
I know that in the meeting that I sat in, and we had kind of a global discussion at the end of it with Dick Anderson being there, and his, you know, his being a part of the city council and what, where their direction is and everything, and really what Devil's Lake Water Improvement District's idea is to, hey, do we need a sewer? If so, what are the costs involved, and what are the next steps? And then, we're, as a district, that's not our charge to promote us, to go forward with the idea of a sewer system one way or the other. It's just to help provide the framework of what direction are the options to go, and then, should we, should those things be formed, then we turn it over to a completely other group. And so, I think this is a positive step.
I'd agree with that.
I do too.
I'll get back with Tina and let her know.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Josh.
No problem.
Do we have a committee report from Special Projects, or?
I have, unfortunately, another postponement due to some meeting dates that are available. So, we've gone ahead and tried to coordinate a meeting with Marine Deputy Lopez on April 20th, 12th, sorry. April 12th is a tentative meeting date to get brought up to date with some of the lake adequate and lake procedures during the 4th of July event, and update people that haven't been updated on boater safety issues. And also, we're going to pin down the spring roadside cleanup, I believe, for the east side of the lake this year, and that's still yet to be determined at this point. So, we'll make that announcement at our next month's meeting, the district meeting.
I noticed, I was gonna say, I noticed that the East Devil's Lake Road is, the vegetation has died back enough, it's probably a good time to go out and clean it up, because there's a lot of garbage from last year, I mean, since last year's cleanup.
More car parts.
Yeah, more car parts.
Oh, that was good.
Yeah, very good. Okay, is that it, Bill?
That's all I have at this point.
All right, thank you. I know that our Save Our Shorelines and Water Quality Monitoring Committee did not meet since the last board meeting, and so there's nothing more to report, just to keep in mind that, that we're looking toward an April 21st planting party for planting, trying to establish some vegetation in different areas around the lake, where I think Josh has ordered 100-plus plants, is that correct?
Yeah, about 120 plants, six shoreline emergent species from Blake's Coastal Nursery down in Glen Eden Beach. They're supposed to be about a week beforehand, I'll go pick them up for us, so.
And then, we'll have a plan together to plant those in various sites around the lake and move forward with that. We figure that a spring planting early in the year will give those plants the best opportunity to survive, and so, that's our next step. So, but more should be coming at the next meeting.
What was the date on that?
April 21st, it's a Saturday.
So, one question I had about, how do you, if you're interested in planting, how do you go about letting us know that you want plants, or is there a list, or how does that work?
Well, actually, we took them right from the Devil's Lake Planning Guide, and I sent that to the nursery, and he told me which ones were available, so we chose those ones that were gonna be most effective and available for us to get our hands on.
Are there different locations already set, or is there open to the public to call?
We haven't completely determined where we wanna put those yet, and yeah, if the public has suggestions as to certain areas where we could potentially do that, we'll definitely evaluate that and see, we're gonna choose the best locations, of course, where the highest, highest rate of survival and propagation would be on these, because we would like them to take off and kind of be able to keep an eye on them and, you know, find out which ones, which ones are gonna be most effective for us, so. And along those lines, I think the total cost of this is gonna be under $1,000. We haven't expended any SOS funds to date this last year, so we're certainly very, very well within our budget for this expenditure, but I don't know if the board would like to make a motion or have that discussion, if those funds are okay to expend for the plants.
I felt comfortable with it. Yeah, it's, I think the Save Our Shoreline Committee, their last couple reports, we have the floating garden, you know, we had directed that committee to come up with something that we can actually put in the water continually, not just the garden, because we have to really see where we're going, what works and what doesn't work, and for that amount of money and the amount of plants that we get, and you got three different varieties, I think that's a great start. I would encourage the public, because we don't have a process, to contact the office and let us know if they feel like they do have a prime area until we actually get something substantial that we know is gonna work in the water.
Yeah.
I think the more placements that we can get throughout the lake is gonna help us in determining what works, what doesn't work.
Sure. And I'll be sure to get that on the website and publish as well, so.
And I know that Dr. Sitzman, when he came and gave his, his presentation to us, that he had kind of a scattering of different places around the lake that he proposed, and I don't know if those were specific places or what, in all honesty. I know it was, it was glossed over pretty quickly
Yeah.
during the meeting, but certainly with 120 plants at, you know, maybe 10 different locations or so, I think that we can at least get a start and see what's taking place. I know that, you know, with the fewer numbers of grass carp since the sea lion came in and visited us during the month of January, we, maybe we'll have a higher rate of success for revegetation, so, something we're watching closely.
Yeah.
Projects and operations, Josh?
Sure. Some of this information, I wasn't here for the last board meeting, so I didn't know exactly all the discussion on that, and I reviewed the video, but some of it you may have heard before. Our Conservation Aeration Project is still currently being considered with the Department of State Lands, US Army Corps of Engineers, and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. We're still in that public comment period to see if anyone has any, any issues or objections to our general plan for the project. So far, we haven't had any pushback or any problems. Most of these agencies are happy to see us moving forward with a viable plan in order to improve the water quality here in the lake. I'm working with Jim Dewey to find out what kind of hardware we need to get our camera system out on the lake. I'll have a magnitude of costs and everything for that as well, but we have received that $4,000 matching grant from the Special Districts Association of Oregon, so they'll give us up to $4,000 in matching funds for this project, which so far, in my preliminary research into this, is gonna be more than enough to get two or three good sites up. But right now, like I said, I'm working with Jim to find a couple of volunteer locations, maybe, and kind of scoping out some key spots. We'd like to have something around the northern part of the lake, I'd like to have something around the Dee River, maybe near Vivian's, or something to that effect, and possibly Regatta. I spoke with a couple of city officials who are interested in this project as well, and we may have some infrastructure we can tap into there to get a site set up as well. So, I'll let everyone know and keep, keep everyone briefed on that as we move through it, and I find out what, what information I come across. The Slets Tribal Charitable Contribution Fund had approved us for a $10,000 grant award for our aeration project. Definitely great news, and we certainly appreciate their continued support of our water quality efforts here at Devil's Lake. I've also started preliminary conversations, since the sewer committee began discussions on the plan we had just reviewed as far as moving forward with the east side of Devil's Lake and getting a better magnitude of costs and engineering plan developed for what's involved with that project. So, I'll keep everyone updated and let you know as we're moving forward through that who may be available or willing to donate funds towards that plan as well. And as always, I will continue and have been continually evaluating different grant funding sources, public, private, state, and federal, to help with any and all of our projects and goals that we have here on the lake.
Josh, I was wondering, do you have any, any kind, I know, working with permitting with the state and feds and such, do we have any idea of when we can expect to hear back from our permit application?
I'll be checking with them the next week to see if they've received any additional information, and I hope that they can give me a little extra information. Some of the agencies are pretty short-staffed, like Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. I think their entire office in Newport only has three people, so they, they're really under the gun for the amount of information they have. But generally speaking, it's something like a 45- to 60-day comment period, and I believe we're about halfway through that. And like I said, it's a good sign that we haven't had any pushback or any kind of real questions yet. That's because we set up several meetings beforehand before we really dove into this project and had a lot of framework available before them, so we briefed those organizations before we put the permits in. So, I would hope sometime in the next two weeks, we'll have a better idea, you know, and I'll throw it out, that maybe sometime in the next six to eight weeks, we could have approval from these agencies, but unfortunately, you know, I don't have a completely solid timeframe on that.
I know that once we, once, I expect that we'll get approval, that we'll need to go out almost immediately with an RFP if we, if we're trying to do some construction in this, in the fall, which would be our work period. And so, I know that the, it seems like, here it is, Mark, that's, you know, October's only seven months away.
Yeah.
I mean, it goes by fast.
Yeah.
And we've had enough preliminary discussion about, you know, the project, and I think, I think we're pretty clear as to where, direction we wanna go and everything on this, but I know that I'd hate to see that permitting process and us to miss our work window if we can go to construction this year.
Well, or a contractor already lined out, you know, it's.
Yeah, and we can, and that's the good thing about the ORS statutes in regards to the RFPs, we can still choose the best contractor for the job, and we don't have to choose the cheapest one. Additionally, there's no set timeframe, we don't have to have an RFP out for three months or anything like that, especially based on the amount of funds that we wanna expend and the, and the public regulations that govern it. So, we can put it out for a logical timeframe, you know, two to four weeks, most likely, if we put it out to RFP. In addition, district staff has already phone interviewed and email interviewed a couple of potential contractors, so we've been sifting through the ones that would be appropriate for this project's scale, ones that have good track records. We have identified three right now, which is more than enough to suffice for a public bidding process, so as soon as we get the regulatory approval, and as soon as the board votes to, you know, put an RFP out, we can immediately send that to contractors, so.
Good, good, yeah. I'd hate to see us just lose this work window coming up this next year, and so.
Don't wanna lose this team.
Very good, all right. Let's see. Any other comments from board members?
So, yeah, do, what is our, what is our work window for that work?
It is, it starts for two months, right, in October 15?
I think it's October through mid-February.
October through, yeah.
Same as what we've, yeah.
Yeah, and I've spoke with two of the contractors, and at least one of them has said that it's, you know, it's a less than two-week install period, so we should not have a problem fitting the construction phase of that project into, into that window at all, so.
Great, good.
Is that fill removal permit, is that what you're talking about?
Uh, the fill, no, the fill removal permit was just for placement of the diffusers on the bottom of the lake. I was talking about the, the actual construction of the project, actually installing the diffusers and the lines and the compressors, is about a two-week, two-week process, give or take, so.
So, do you know if the, the permit, did it ever get approved, or?
Not yet, we're still waiting on that one. We do, however, have approval from the county to place our shoreline compressor equipment at the.
So, is there a comment period for the public on the state permit?
Yeah, it's in it right now, yeah. It's in there with all of them. We submitted all of those permits concurrently.
That's a 30-day comment period?
Generally, it's 30-day, and I think up to 60 on some of them, and I know, I know we've gotta be a solid halfway through it, so we shouldn't be more than, you know, four weeks out on running out of that clock. Like I said, I'll recheck with them this next week and see if I can get some, some firmer answers from them as far as.
You should be able to look at the comment box online.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Thanks, Josh. New business? Josh, do you wanna cover those?
Sure.
Chair?
Yes.
So, the next item, I'm gonna sustain from any votes on the fireworks or discussion conflict of interest because of a board member on the Neighborhood Association.
Okay. Thank you. Potential?
Our fireworks permit was approved, the district approved and signed that and returned it back. I believe it's, it should be fine, I'm sure, as it is every year, but we've approved it, so. The other part of the fireworks discussion is, I know the board decided to make a donation to it this year to help support it, since it's such a great event for our economy and for the residents on the lake, but we need to determine an amount of what the district would like to contribute to the fireworks event.
Yeah, I believe last, last meeting, we threw around some numbers and such, and deferred till this meeting to decide what we would like to donate to the fireworks display this year, and I don't know if other board members have had time to think about that. I feel like after our discussion, and what I see is such a positive event for our community in a draw, that we should donate, I would like to move that we donate $2,000 to support the fireworks display for the, for this 4th of July.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you make sure that the Devil's, the fireworks display gets $2,000 from the board for this year?
Absolutely.
And then, Josh, and I know that as we approach budget, but I think we ought to line item budget that in the future, and $2,000 is substantial, but it's, it's not a huge portion of that display, but I think it's something that the board should, should support in the future. So, as we develop our budget, Josh and Steve, if you would try to put those, that in verbiage and such, I think that would be a great thing. Good. Moving on, Community Days event and such?
Yeah. Genie Sprague, our Parks and Rec Director here in Lincoln City, approached me to ask if we would like to kind of join in with a little effort with them on the Community Days kickoff event on April 7th. I think they're gonna give away hot dogs, a few other things. It's an Arbor Day celebration too, so definitely with the spirit of our district and environmental preservation and community outreach. So, we plan on being there, I'll be there, I think I'm gonna set up our tent and take some of our information, our shoreline planning guards, and just talk to the public that walks through, you know, answer questions about the lake and just have a good presence, so.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
I don't have a time of day on that yet.
So, we're gonna set up a pop-up and?
Yeah, yeah, and of course, anyone, board members, committee members, any who would like to come up and participate or be a part of that.
If you would send out an email, I know I would, I'm pretty sure I'm available too, and so we, I'm sure that you can get several of us to be there with you.
The more the merrier.
Yes.
I can only talk to one person at a time, usually.
Very good, very good.
All right. Next business, our storage unit has been cleaned out, the boat has been moved to its new storage location, we're gonna have a savings of about $2,000 a year from that. a year from that. So I'd like to thank, uh, Larry Rich and Bill and Julie definitely for helping with that effort. Uh, it took us several days to get that all lined up and done and, and without their help, we couldn't have, couldn't, it would have taken me a couple of weeks, so. Um, you know, we get, we get a good savings there. Uh, the boat and equipment's in a, in a good location and we're not, uh, we're not expending any funds that we don't need to, so.
Great.
Uh, also, uh, next item, the Lake Stewart Award, we're, um, interviewing the last video and conversations I voted the board are going to rename that the Bud Depwig Lake Stewart Award, Memorial Award. And we plan to present that at the Community Days banquet on four twenty-one, so.
And Bill has agreed to present that award?
Yes, I, uh, I talked to Joyce Depwig, uh, today as a matter of fact. And, uh, she seemed to be quite elated that we would consider her husband as a recipient and, uh, renamed the award for him. So, yeah, she's quite, quite excited to, um, have that take place. So I told her that, uh, we would be inviting her with amount of, um, close family to attend. And, yeah, she's pretty excited.
Good.
Um, our next thing that is really on our agenda and something that the, the district was definitely formed for, so something we have to keep in our sight is aquatic vegetation growth. Having the sea lion in the lake definitely decimated the grass cart population, which, uh, of course, in turn is going to have some type of effect. We don't know to what extent or how much. Uh, of course, we want some aquatic vegetation to regrow. Um, but district staff has been researching options as to control that. In addition to committing more funds in the upcoming budget period for that fund, uh, we have also been interviewing aquatic vegetation contractors as subs, uh, to be able to come through here, uh, and, and take care of that if we need to physically or mechanically harvest it. Uh, I've also looked at equipment internally for the district to have and own and, and other options. We'll continue looking into that and, and keeping that in our sights, so. Uh, before I get to the next one, I just don't want to forget, uh, Julie has went around and put a substantial amount of work into our signage around the lake. We had a lot of, of sun-faded signs, some falling off, some just completely gone, uh, you know, and worked on, um, using Whitney's sign in her inventory that she put together last year again, which was great. Um, but anyways, Julie has, uh, contacted a sign maker and has a couple of good, uh, templates for us set up, some really nice-looking signs that, that are basically a lake map with a couple of key areas on it. Very simple, very readable and understandable. Um, and we're planning on having a few of those printed up. Uh, I don't know what the exact cost is yet. We're still working on that, um, but.
Well, I mean, I think we need to update those. They were getting pretty tattered and so I, I hope you'll just go forward with that and.
Sure.
And, um, we'll probably get those up before Memorial Day. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan.
The only other thing I'd say is, um, keep it simple. The other signs, I think, uh, you almost need a college degree or even a doctorate to understand some of the information that was on there.
The water's blue, the writing's black.
Right.
That's what we've got. And oh, there we go, Julie, Julie has the.
And Julie, uh, thank you for doing that for us.
Yes, very much. Pretty simple, actually, just, um, our lake, the different, um, boat ramps that are available, the different, um, sections of the lake itself, like the middle section, the north section. It gives our, our website on there and, um, we just wanted to keep it simple. And what we're looking at is maybe the four main boat ramps posting sign back. And then, um, the smaller areas like Sandpoint and, and such.
Julie, just, just a quick, would you mind speaking into the, the microphone so people at home can hear you?
So the smaller areas would just be posted like this with the website so that they could check, um, anything that they wanted to know about the water quality or different areas of the lake. So trying to downsize a little with the different areas, but still keep, um, the main, um, Brown Bear, Regatta Park, Holmes Road and the campground are where we actually have our sign boards. The sign board at Holmes Road needs to be replaced, taken out and redone. Other than that, um, that's basically the only place that's pretty failing at the moment.
Was there a sign board there at the park right there by where we check the water at the dam? That park on the other side of the dam?
Uh, that's taken down for the winter time.
It's been taken down, okay.
Um, but we, we plan on posting just like we have in the past.
Water quality signs, yes, at all those places. But then also to, to have maybe a smaller version of, of the sign with our website.
Okay.
Maintaining it.
I guess the other thing, uh, just thinking out loud, um, hazard areas, uh, you know, it's, there's definitely some very, very shallow areas that people, uh, take the rental boats and jet skis.
Josh and I spoke about that and, um, because we're not a regulatory and we're only informational, that we didn't want a, a liability situation to happen there.
Yeah.
So if, um, the Marine Board wanted to do something like that, it would be more appropriate than, um, the water district to do that.
And that may be a good question for Deputy Lopez when we talk to him at the next special project events meeting and see if there's any kind of guidance he can offer us on signage for some of those areas.
He's going to direct us to the Oregon State Marine Board to where if you have any navigational hazards, uh, lookout for's or whatever, you need to make a complaint to the, uh, Marine Division so that they will follow up on a complaint and address it accordingly.
Well, maybe we can do a, you know, get that contact and, and I can make a, a petition to them through email or something and just tell them we have a few locations, uh, mark those locations out on a map and, and, and send that to them and see if we can get a response.
Or get the proper floating warning, uh, signs up there or cones, uh, because, you know, one of our missions is, uh, you know, to promote recreation and I think along that goes safe recreation. And, uh, I think that we should kind of prioritize and definitely seek that out through them.
I know in the past, um, they've been hesitant.
Yeah.
Or at least the, the sheriff has been hesitant and, um, and so, but there's no reason why we shouldn't push.
Right.
And so, I mean, if we can make it safer for, you know, the.
One person.
Yeah, I mean, all it takes is one person and so, um, if we can make it safer, that's, that should be our goal.
So I have one more thing that, um, it's kind of been ignored for, we've never really had signage at Sandpoint Launch on, um, Loop Drive. I didn't know if, that this is something that you might want to also establish there or just leave as is. Um, there's really nothing there, not even water quality signs aren't there.
Right.
So that's.
I think we should.
We, we, there's a sign there.
There's some kind of a sign.
Well, there's that old white wood sign.
Right, but I, I think we ought to, you know, if, if we don't do anything immediately for this, this season, we should at least do something when we put our, our compressor there and then we could.
Oh, yeah.
As that changes, we can, we can upgrade that and make our signage a lot more visible and something there. I think you're right.
I thought it might be informational of what is this thing here.
Right.
You know, from a public image, but I think it's consistency throughout.
Right.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion that we include a, an extra sign at the Sandpoint, Sandpoint Boat Ramp for water quality, uh, in conjunction with the Marine Board Safety Sign that's, exists there today.
Second half.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Let's get another fifth sign then to place there.
Okay, and, um, for the four signs with shipping, it was like five hundred and forty dollars, so.
Okay.
Be another hundred bucks.
Yeah, our, our budget is more than, more than set up to handle that.
Did you get three bids on that?
We can do that.
Procurement rules, it's not at that limit. We're okay.
Quality printing.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Julie.
Again, you know, Julie's work with Josh, it's a, another example of involving the community and making your job easier and things better and for every, everybody. Thanks, Julie. Um, last, uh, thing on new business, Josh, Mid Coast Water Planning Partnership discussion?
Sure, sure. Uh, I had a lot of great conversations, made a lot of great contacts with the district when I was at the Special District Association of Oregon, such a long one, uh, conference a few weeks ago up in Seaside. And one of those contacts, uh, directed me to, uh, or invited me to go to the Mid Coast Water Planning Partnership, uh, meeting that was down in Newport about a week or two ago. Um, and really, I'll, you know, I'll read you their mission purpose here out of their charter and, uh, the purpose of the Mid Coast Water Planning Partnership is develop an inclusive community forum which examines water use in the region, identifies current potential water challenges and creates a unified plan to balance water needs. Essentially, they're, they are a large organization that brings smaller organizations together with government regulatory bodies, uh, to do things like apply for larger DEQ 319 grants, uh, you know, things that are, are very large and complex in scope, um, and, and very, very big money as far as grants are concerned. Uh, and that's not necessarily meaning that, you know, we, we want to apply for twenty million dollars for a 319 grant just to go to Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. But if we are involved in this organization and we are advocates for our district and we're advocates for problems such as E. coli and Thompson Creek, uh, one of their charges is in-stream water remediation and, uh, dealing with things like 303D listed water bodies, which Thompson, Rock Creek and Devil's Lake all are on that EPA list. Uh, so by staying involved with them, we can become a component of some of these larger regional water plans. And as they develop these, these large plans to, to plant large trees and shade waterways and make bioswales and, and other things to deal with, with watershed-wide problems, uh, we can get the benefit of some of that as well.
I, I guess a couple of things come to mind. Uh, first, how, how often are the meetings?
They generally have a monthly meeting. Um, and I think every few, every quarter, they have a, a larger, uh, kind of everybody meeting. But the technical working groups meet monthly and bimonthly, I believe.
So is this down in Newport every time or?
Generally speaking, yeah. Some people host it. We could, we could volunteer to host it at, at the community college in our offices if we chose, so.
Do you have an idea of what our time commitment would be then?
Um.
On a monthly basis? Is it a day, a whole day or a half day?
No, the, the large meeting, it actually was at night, after hours. Um, they, they fed me, which was great. Um, and it was about four hours long. Uh, so the technical working group meetings are somewhere between two and four hours. So probably something about, uh, quarterly, an average of maybe ten-ish hours, give or take a few minutes for email conversations.
I would, uh, postpone this until I have a little bit more time to read and, uh, research. Uh, my concern would be, uh, time commitment versus value that we get from it. Um, it sounds like it's a program that is for very large grants, uh, or capital expenditures, partnership and grant writing. All of those things, um, are important. Uh, so I just want to, uh, kind of delay, uh, no financial, we don't, is there a membership cost to it or anything?
There's no membership fee.
Um, who's, who's coordinating, coordinating it, by the way?
Uh, there are several different people who do. There's a, a, a water consultant named G.I.S. that has a big role that plays in it. Uh, generally, it's volunteer coordination through different agencies. Um, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife helps with some of it. Uh, Department of Environmental Quality helps with some of it. Uh, it's really, it's, it's a very multi-agency, multi-organizational collaborative effort. So a whole, a whole mash of people that get together to, um, work these things out and, and run the organization.
When's their next meeting?
Uh, I believe the next one is in, the next large meeting is in May. Their technical working group meeting was actually tonight. Um, but I wanted to get this charter in front of the board before we had any further participation.
Think they would, uh, be effective in getting D. River blasted out and dredged?
I, I think anything is a potential. I think, I think the D. River may be a little bit more of a municipal level, um, issue for us to tackle. Uh, but, um, like I said, i- if anything can be related to one of these larger plans somehow and, and just like how we do in our conversations, uh, come up with the rationale for that. Anything, anything's possible.
Well, and I, I guess it kind of goes back to, um, looking at the projects that we do have. We have a pretty good handle on it, not only the funding mechanism, uh, but the RFP process, uh, you know, through the aeration and things. And so, um, I just want to have a better idea if, uh, the value here versus the time commitment. And it's not saying that, uh, we can't look at it down the road.
Well, I, I think the key is, not that we shouldn't be involved.
Oh, no, exactly.
It's that, that, you know, what's our, what's going to be the best use of our time and most focus and, and so if we have to.
Kind of part of our goal setting of our budget maybe. I see it there because, uh, I, I need to be able to fully understand where the benefit. And then, as we set our goals for the next year, um, then you bring on partners and say that they can help you and everything. Um, and we're getting ready to go into the busy season, in-water season, you know, testing and everything else. Uh, so not saying that's a bad thing.
So you'd like to table it until next meeting?
Table it until next meeting so I can research a little bit more.
Does anybody else have any feelings one way or the other on that? Bill? Okay, let's, let's table it, put it on the agenda for next meeting then.
Sure.
Thank you. Right. Um, that concludes new business. Um, non-agenda items. Um, Josh, I was wondering, could you give it, you were, you know, you missed last meeting, so, and so, uh, could you give us a little rundown on the conference? Is that, I'm kind of catching you off guard here, but.
Oh, no.
Tell us, tell us why you weren't here.
It was, it was so exciting, guys. Uh, public meetings law all the way through grant proposal writing. Uh, but no, I went down a day early for the, the pre-conference because I just couldn't get enough conference. And, um, there was, there was a grant seminar, uh, that started that out and that was great. It was a half day. Uh, I identified a couple of resources, uh, that, that will help us maybe look for some future grants. Uh, it was a, it was a grant writing firm who put the seminar on, so they weren't super forthcoming with how to, uh, really write a successful grant, other than here's our phone number and email address. Uh, yeah, I mean, but like I said, uh, there were a couple of resources identified that got out of the presentation. So, uh, it was, it was worth the time. Uh, additionally, uh, public meetings law changes, uh, presentations on that, uh, presentations on new technologies, um, board war stories. Uh, George Dunkel put on a couple of really, really interesting and amusing, uh, talks there in regards to that. And, uh, it just, it further solidified my, uh, my opinion that we're headed in the right direction as a board. Um, in addition, I made the contacts with, uh, some other organizations from DEQ, from some soil and water conservation districts, uh, to kind of have a little bit more information as to, as we move through these projects, maybe the things that they've done and, and some things that we can learn from that before we endeavor into some of these situations. So it was, it was very successful, I think, in general. It was a, it was a beautiful area. The food was okay.
Very good. So it was well worth the, the time and money that we spent?
It was. Uh, the really good part about that is we had not attended for two years and they gave us a free five hundred dollar conference fee. So it didn't actually cost anything to do.
I guess we'll be back in another two or three years then.
Nice. The next one's in Bend, so we'll see how that goes.
Great. Um, any questions from the board with regard to the conference? Okay, um, I don't know if the.
I do have one.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair.
Was it brought up or what, or do you have to announce where you're from or was there any questions asked of you of what you actually do or where's that?
Oh, yeah. Every time I sat down next to someone or at, uh, at any of the three meals a day. And, and that's one of the really good. And, and that's one of the really good things about it, and I was able to make a lot of those contacts. People were very gregarious in that, you know, we have name tags that show, you know, Josh Brainerd, Devils Lake Water Improvement District. And you can see, oh, you're a regulator, you're a vendor, this and that. So it really is a lot of intermingling and, and information sharing and, and like I said, just kind of common practice. Whenever you sit down at those things or run into somebody, you shake their hand and say what you are, where you're from, what you do.
So being from Devils Lake or Lincoln City, how many other coastal lake managers on the Oregon coast are there?
Just me, buddy. No, they actually even, they had a presentation, and like you learned from Rob tonight in our board practice assessment, there are 900 special districts, so there was a broad representation of people, lots of fire districts, irrigation districts. But they had a presentation, a big slideshow, you know, of different districts, and they had us included in it. And they only had about 200 of the 900 represented there, and it had a beautiful picture of our lake and people kayaking on it in Devils Lake Water Improvement District. So I was very proud to see that up there. So we're, we're even well represented in our governing organization.
Thanks.
Thanks, Josh. Well, I look forward to seeing the fruits of that weekend. See, how much money? All right. I don't know if, most people know that, have been watching or been part of the, the board that attends, but we have a, we began with Josh when he became our employee a year ago, December. And we started a process with him of a quarterly evaluation. And the original quarterly evaluation was to take a look at what was taking place and how that has evolved over the course of this, these five meetings I think we've had now. We continued that past his one year and had one yesterday. And the, the, the evaluation of Josh is taking place in executive session. And we talk about what's, what his goals are and what he's accomplished, and then we give feedback to him. And one of the things that came up in that executive session was our current telephone situation. And currently, the district has a hardline system at the Community College which has a recording on it of Josh now, not Tina. If someone calls in, they get, they generally get the recording, and it's, it's probably not a very good system. And so we talked in executive session about what we could do. And one of the things that, that came up is as, as technology changes and such, that maybe we need to change too. And at issue is that in our contract with Josh, we, we pay him a monthly stipend for cellphone use. But in addition to that, you know, maybe we should purchase the cellphone and change over how we go about taking care of business with Devils Lake Water Improvement District. And so in our discussion, we, we talked about the antiquatedness of our current system and the idea that maybe we should do away with that hardline and transfer all calls to his cellphone.
And cost.
And, and, and cost.
Because there is cost with that.
Right. We, we, we would save approximately $75 a month plus long-distance fees by doing that. And Josh indicated in his evaluation that he was willing to answer phone calls anytime. So, and, and so I think we're in the process of looking into how we can either dovetail his current, the current district number into his cellphone, or...
Google account.
Yeah, try and do a Google Voice and, and have that, and, and just have to republish it on the website, which won't be a big issue.
So we're in the process of, of looking at that and how we can manage that. And Josh has graciously been willing to answer phone calls at almost any hour of the night, or...
Or text.
Or text. But I think as originally, I, I know this conversation came up, and I brought this up in our evaluation years ago. We talked about, hey, what's the, do we really need this or not, hardline? And technology's changed enough that we probably don't need a hardline. And most of us have went with our homes away from any kind of hardline and all to our cellphone. And as long as Josh was willing to answer phone calls because they could come at any time, that this might be the best option. Are you looking into that right at this? I know this was just yesterday, Josh, but I assume that you're going to look into this and then bring it forth at the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, and I've looked into it. I think that, I don't think it's going to be an issue to do that Google Voice. I don't know if there's a, any kind of business fees or anything associated with it. I don't think there is. I think it's as simple as just having that number published and linking it to my current cellphone, so.
Well, and I guess I'd...
A district cellphone.
Yeah, like bring up something else that was brought up, you know, technology. It's, it's perception when people call, the LAN line also. If Josh isn't there, the recording comes on and people think he's not in the office. Well, that may not be the case. He may be upstairs doing something or in the conference room, or, and it's a lot easier. And I think the savings is worth it to have that phone if you are upstairs or in a conference room, that you can text back or you can put a pre-prompted message that would get back to the customer. I just think answering machines, I don't think there are very many people who maintain them anymore.
No.
So.
No, I would agree. And, and I would rather get a call while I'm on the lake because cellphone coverage is out there and it's just fine. If I'm waiting for a call from a regulator or somebody and they're trying to catch me at 4:30, I would rather hit that before they go on vacation for a week and a half and be able to have access to it. And not everyone will go through, even if they have your, a cellphone or alternate number and call that, especially if they call a LAN line and leave a message, so.
Great. Thanks, Josh.
No problem.
Yeah, I think that'll just make things, you know, rarely do people come into the office. We're fortunate that we have an office in Oregon Coast Community College. They're a great person. We, we are so thankful for our offices there and the facilities that we have and how we can accommodate meetings and other, other things. It's, it's raised the, the level of our professionalism, I sense, I think, since we've been there. And we appreciate that partnership that we have with them. But, you know, Josh is out and about, and, you know, if he's not there, then he normally leaves his cellphone number and people can call him if they stop by. And this will just be a better way that they can get him whenever, whenever they, they need. So, thanks, Josh.
No problem. And I do, I did, I did put a grease board outside my office too, so, you know, if I pop out, if I have to run out for a meeting or to check the mail or run upstairs or something, I do my best to, to put a little note on there or something, you know, when I'm going to be in or some, some, you know, type of office hours. And I, I try to keep as much as possible, just in case anyone does come by, so.
Thanks.
Chair, can I make another comment too? So the board had also asked Josh to get out into the community, and I just wanted to thank you. You know, I see your pictures, whether it be in the news media, that you're going to the chamber functions on a regular basis. And, you know, I think it really makes a difference on our image. They know who you are. You're accessible at these functions, and I just wanted to say thank you for getting out there.
My pleasure, Steve.
All right. Next, under non-agenda items, we have been looking for a new member for our Budget Committee. Steve used to be on our Budget Committee, now that he's a director...
I'm still on it.
He's, he's still on it, but we need to replace his...
Different position.
His commu-, the, his, his position as a community member. And I know Josh has been out soliciting people to see if we could get one. We do have one application, and that's Miles Schlesinger. And to date, he is our one applicant. And I'd like to move that we, we all know Miles from his involvement with the district over the years. And I think he'd be a great addition to our Budget Committee. And the, the responsibilities of the Budget Committee really are one meeting a year with, to go over the line items of the budget as, as Josh, our Budget Officer, gives the budget in May. I believe it's the second Friday in May. And, and so I would like to move that we accept Miles Schlesinger as our newest Budget Committee member in replacement of, of Steve Brown.
I'll stick with that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Would you please inform Miles that he is now a member of our Budget Committee? Thank you, Miles, for volunteering. I think he's in Palm Springs right now.
He is in Palm Springs, getting some sun right now.
Yes, I think he needed to get out of the, the clouds. Okay? Any, that's all I have for non-agenda items. Any other non-agenda items from the board? Any other members? Bill?
I recall hearing of, comments made about the rain garden at Regatta Park. So I would like to make a motion that we designate funds to a local landscape company to give that garden a facelift or trimming? Or maybe we should discuss a little bit more about what we would like to see out of that before we make a commitment to upgrade it or make it look a little different?
Honestly, I can't, I know I've seen it, but I can't tell you how big it is or what, what kind of shape it is.
I'd like to go down and look at it before I vote on anything on it.
Okay, so it's roughly a...
I found out where it was yesterday, so, earlier today. So I, I will go by there and look, too.
Okay.
Maybe what we should do, Bill, instead of...
I'll rescind that motion.
Yeah, okay. Maybe between now and next meeting, make sure that all of us go visit it and see what condition it is. It's, it's, it's signed, I know that. At least it was. And so go down, take a look at it, see what it might need, and then come to our April meeting with somebody.
We, yeah, somebody can take some pictures to identify that it's the only thing that isn't manicured in the park.
Let's see. So I'll be able to see it when I go to... Whereabout is it, Bill?
As you're coming down the hill, just before you come down onto the flat, there's a little curved area with this, one of our signs and a weed patch, basically, right now. It was designated as a rain garden with several different varieties of plants, but they've since been overgrown with local...
Blackberries, huh?
Broom grass and whatnot.
My recollection, I thought it had some Oregon grape in it and some other things, but I honestly, it's vaguely in my mind.
It's still, if, it needs some love. There's plants that are thriving there, original plants that were supposed to be there and have grown. But there's also a descriptive sign there that talks about it. And that was given to us by the city. So I, I suggest what we want to do is all look at it, get a picture of it, and get a plan together. But we also should check with the city to make sure that they still, their intent is for us to be able to feature that as a water garden or planting.
Let me get with Jeannie, yeah, and ask her kind of what their future goal, what that is, and if they would rather, you know, if they, like I said, if they have some other purpose for it or not.
Or whose responsibility is it? I mean, is it truly ours? Was it the land given to us, or was...
So how this came about, I was approached by Dick Anderson, and he made a, a comment. And for those of you who don't know, when he was mayor, he did kind of give that area to save our shoreline. And it was an informational thing. And so I, I just think that we need to determine what needs to be done with it and treat it at the caliber that this board does, which is everything's just perfect.
Exactly.
We can do that.
Okay. All right. Good. Any other non-agenda items from the board? Bill? Additional comments from citizens? Mr. Christie?
Just wanted to take this opportunity, first of all, since you all took action on it, to thank you from the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association for your contribution to the July 3 fireworks event this year and what appears to be your ongoing commitment in future years. Because I, I think the plan is, is to continue this going for many years in the future. So just to give you a little bit of an update, I signed the contract last week. The total amount this year versus, is the same as what we spent the previous year, which is $12,500. So your $2,000 will, will definitely be a great contribution. We've got a fundraiser coming up. Our goal is to have that completely funded and, and the start of next year going in our, in our kitty also. So to that end, Stephen and I, you have been kind enough on Memorial Day weekend, we did, is it Sunday?
Sunday, yeah, Sunday, yeah.
And we'll get the time out in both the newspaper and on the DNL, DLNA website. And maybe we can get Josh to put it on the Water Improvement District website also, since you guys are gracious in being participants in this event this year. So we've got a great fundraiser that we'll have to continue to raise money towards that great event. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you. We appreciate it and are looking forward to another great event. Boat parade ahead of it, we'll get information on that. Be meeting with the new Marine Sheriff and Deputy.
Lopez.
Lopez, yes. And I'm excited, and I hope he'll be as, as excited to do it as Barry Brewster was last year. He did a great job also. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, just for the board's information, people in the audience. So the fundraiser last year raised about 90, I think it was $9,200 in four hours. And that's pretty darn good for a hot dog feed, you know, on an old fireworks barge. Although Bill and I, I think, and Max resurfaced it for the hot dog feed, didn't we? Or was it for the fireworks?
Fireworks.
But we have always appreciate the Neighborhood Association and all the community members that helped fund the fireworks last year. It was, it was a great show.
Absolutely.
Sheriff did a great job last year, too. You know, that was one of the things that the committee wanted to do is have Sheriff Brewster be more of a community and educational piece out there so that nobody would get hurt.
Grand marshal?
Yeah, kind of a grand marshal, too. He led the boat parade around, which I think a lot of people, not only enjoyed it in the parade, but a lot of the kids on the shoreline certainly enjoyed his lights and his siren going. So anyways, all in all, it's a great event.
Any other additional comments from the board? One of the things I, I needed to say is I'm unable to make the next board meeting from a commitment that I have. So we'll have to let Tina know that she will need to be here. Hopefully, she's better by then.
Tag her in.
With that, thank you all for coming and listening and being a part of what goes on in Devils Lake. It's an exciting year coming up, and although it's March, summer will be here shortly. This meeting is adjourned.
Turn around. Turn around.
Probably Josh giving me that.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Steve, my favorites.
Yeah, at least you...
Thanks, Kathy.